Okay, good morning and welcome to quarterly hearing already related to COVID-19 of the Education Minister. We've got quite a few people in this meeting. Welcome anybody who's online watching. And this will be available to view later if at any time you have any connection issues etcetera. I think perhaps we should just briefly introduce who's in the meeting so that people are aware, particularly in this format. I'm Deputy Robert Ward, I chair the Education scrutiny panel. Minister, do you want to go Nick?
Yeah, it's Senator Tracy Bowler, Minister for Education.
Deputy Jeremy Masson, Assistant Minister for Education.
If we go through the panel next.
Yeah, Deputy Robyn, to you then.
I'm Deputy St John, Trevor Pointon, Member of the Panel.
Perhaps the officers can introduce themselves next to us.
So Mark Rogers, Director General for Children, Young People, Education and Skills.
Sean O'Regan, Group Director of Education.
I think you're muted, Sabuie, sorry.
Apologies, Savvy Family Director for Skills.
I'm Keith Posner, I'm the Director of Policy and Planning, Children, Young People, Education and Skills.
That's great, thank you very much everyone. I'll just say as we go through the meeting, obviously we've got a huge agenda. We've sent you some questions in advance as well, so we know we've had a lot to ask. So if at any point I step in and try and push it along a bit, I'm just trying to push the meeting along, so please don't think I'm being rude in any way. We will, I will always be polite, as you know. If we start off with, I'll start off with some questions. Obviously, one of the big topics that people have a very keen interest in is school closures and opening. So if I ask the Minister to start, what plans are there, if any, for the reopening of schools at this stage? For example, are there different scenarios being considered for different schools?
Yeah, thank you Chairman. So it's a really complex situation that we have at this moment in time. But if I can give you a bit of background, so basically our offices are working on a safe exit education project. And so this is exploring a number of scenarios about how or when we can reopen schools. So this will be providing me with, and I'll give you an example, some examples. A set of principles for opening of schools and nurseries to enable increased numbers of children to attend safely. The medical evidence for opening schools and nurseries to increase numbers of children. A sequence of reopening schools and nurseries to different groups of children based on an agreed framework for prioritisation. A system-wide approach to opening schools and nurseries to increase numbers of children. However, enabling the development of bespoke arrangements in schools and nurseries based on their local context. So capacity and physical environment. Considered research on the safe opening of schools and nurseries from other countries. Factoring into planning what has been successful in similar jurisdictions. And what will be delivered to children returning to schools and nurseries in the interim and longer term. So includes things like wellbeing checks.
Okay, so I mean, we understand fully how difficult the situation is, and that was one of the consequences of lockdown. When you say an agreed framework, are you referring to agreed by, by who? Would that be school heads, unions, and I'm thinking about frontline teachers, obviously you have to deliver the education and so on. So how is that framework going to be agreed?
Okay, so I think it's really important. So I've set out a set of principles to officers around specifically looking at other jurisdictions and the experience that they're having or what they're going through at the moment. Our officers are regularly meeting with all unions, not just teaching unions, but Unite and Prospect as well. To identify any of their concerns or any of their ideas. And they'll have principles as well that they feel are appropriate and how they can manage a situation. I think the two biggest concerns I have, because of course we have to do this based on health advice. So the two areas within that health advice, I think are going to be particularly problematic. Are our physical distancing and our mass gatherings. So that's of particular concern.
Yeah, and in terms of, so I'd imagine then we would inevitably look at a staggered approach to reopening of schools. And then effectively see how it works, see what the impact is.
Yeah, so I think that is potentially where we're finding ourselves when you're looking at some of the situations that you're finding yourselves in. I mean, just to give an example, like I said, with the mass gathering and the social physical distancing issues. We have in some of our secondary schools between 700, 800 children. And just giving an example, one secondary school with a two metre distancing requirement can fit 35 children in a hall. This is one particular school, so of course you have to take into context the physical environment. And the ability to manoeuvre around with that, within that physical distancing requirement. So you know, one secondary school that I know of, for example, it's that 35 children they can about fit in a school hall. But then there's about six in a average classroom in that school, and then roughly about eight children in a computer room. So that's just an example of some of the complexities in a secondary school. So that's just to give you some kind of visual image to understand what that looks like and what that means.
Yeah, and obviously that's going to take a lot of planning. So these plans should be well in advance. So will parents be made told about the plans to remain closed or reopening good time? And what sort of good time are we talking about there so that they can prepare as well? Whether the children are still at home or going back, perhaps even on specific days of the week, for example.
Yeah, no, absolutely. We're absolutely mindful of the fact that we need to try and provide as much lead in time as we can. Not just with parents, but schools themselves, so they can prepare appropriately. And also, you know, you may have children that feel slightly anxious about returning. Because there may be concerns around their own safety. So we have to take all that into context as well. But absolutely, we need to ensure that we give appropriate amount of time for people to prepare and plan.
And the schools themselves will obviously need some sort of leading time, because there will inevitably be, I don't know, signage, marking of floors, have been prepared with washing facilities and so on. For social distancing, which will be inevitable. So will, will schools have adequate lead in time for reopening? And will that be consistent across all schools?
So in terms of, so of course, looking at the minimum standards for social distancing and hygiene practices. We'd have to recognise we've got the appropriate sanitation in place, the appropriate PPE with regards to the guidelines that will have, implementation of robust risk assessments. A cleaning strategy for schools prior to opening, when open, and following an outbreak if there should be one. And ensure schools are organised appropriately to ensure the practice of stringent two metre social distancing. So that there's a lot that goes into that. So of course, we're already working, the officers are already working directly with, like I said, the unions about how how we can do that. I don't know whether Sean or Keith or Mark can add anything further to that, because they've been in direct conversations with them.
Keith, do you want to step in at this point? You're called.
Yeah, all I can say to add to what the Minister has put is that we are in regular contact with unions, but also had teachers in our planning. The Deputy makes a really good point concerning lead in time, and we have to be mindful that schools are going to be prepared to enable more children to come back. Schools have remained open to children of critical workers and vulnerable children too, so there's some good learning that's happened there. But of course, as we introduce more children and we have to adhere to the social distancing guidelines, which is set out by the Medical Officer of Health. About putting that practice, putting those things into practice will take some time. I think we've had really good meetings so far. We have ongoing meetings most days now to build together what this will look like in schools.
Yeah, I think Deputy Masson wants to say something?
Yeah, it just goes back to the original question you asked about who would be agreed by, and of course, just to reassure the public that the first, first point of call, of course, is the clinical medical advice, which we would want to follow. We know, for example, some areas of France have been able to downgrade to a one metre distance. But including things like masks and other protective equipment for the children. But again, before we do agree with anyone else, we need to get the agreement of the, of the medical advice, that's all I wanted to add.
Okay, thank you for that. I mean, I'm thinking as well that, obviously, I reiterate, we know how difficult this situation is. And what we're trying to, I think we're all looking for some solutions that would work for everybody, so we do recognise that. But in terms of safety considerations for staff, students and family members who perhaps are in high risk categories. I think about if I was being asked to go back to, if I was to the teacher at the moment. I was given my emergency pack because I have asthma, which obviously also being a bit of a hypochondriac, I was also, that frightened the life out of me. So I'd be very conscious of this. And I wonder, I try, you know, it's always good to try and put yourself in that situation. So what will be happening to ensure the safety of staff and perhaps any staff who don't feel safe going back?
So absolutely, I'm with you on that Deputy Ward. I of course have an underlying condition myself, and I'm currently eighth week into isolation. But to give you some ideas on numbers, because we have taken this very seriously, because recognising the medical and health advice that's been provided and the concerns around people having underlying, underlying conditions. And of course, some of them may have been asked to isolate for 12 weeks because of whether it's the certain condition they have or certain drugs that they're having to take for that condition. So just to give an idea, we've got 2,047 employees. And 546 have declared an underlying condition. 463 of these are in education. So that's across the whole of Sipes, Children, Young People, Education and Skills. But 463 of these are in education. And at the time this data was particularly collected, there were predefined conditions. So we did not have the advice to collect information about the severity of the condition. So of course, we'd have to go back and check that again with the health advice to make sure that we're not putting anyone in harm's way, or they feel they're in harm's way and make sure we've got the appropriate support in place for them. So today we know we have 129 employees in Children, Young People, Education and Skills off due to isolating through conditions. So that's just to give you a picture, but I'm not sure whether there's anything further that officers may want to expand on with regards to that.
I can add something here, this is.
Sorry, sorry Keith, before you speak, I'd just welcome Deputy Higgins, who's managed to overcome his IT thing there in Eton as well, just to say that, sorry Keith, carry on.
Thank you. All I was going to say, before members of staff will return who are vulnerable and have certain conditions, but feel they are able to return to school, we would undertake risk assessments for them. So that would have to be in place where that's discussed and to see whether it is feasible and safe for them to return.
I mean, I have to bring up something that I brought up a number of times before regards the autonomy situation, because different heads do have different attitudes at times towards staff. And in this situation, there will be a need for consistency of support for staff. How are you ensuring that all staff are getting the same leeway in all schools? So for example, if one head perhaps has a, just as a scenario, a harder approach to staff not wanting to come back because they feel vulnerable. Is there a mechanism in place to ensure that it's fair across the, across the education system?
Sean, can I ask you to answer that please? It's probably best for you to directly answer with regards to head teachers and autonomy.
Yeah, very happy to Minister. As Keith has said Deputy Ward, is safety first before anybody with a self-identified underlying medical condition returns, they themselves will be asked to risk assess. And then as, as the de facto employer on behalf of the SEB, our people services, our HR team will lead that self-assessment. Our lead for facilities management and health and safety, Nick Jewell, has worked up very detailed assessment piece for as and when we're ready for the phased return of children and staff back to school. And that will be across the whole system. Of course, as the Minister has said earlier, once we've got these agreed principles and the central approach. We have to look school by school at how that works. It's been touched on, there's a physical dimension, the size of classrooms, the size of halls, the width of corridors. And more importantly, there's the human resource dimension, because you might have a maths department with very few people who are well in one school, and they're all fitting well in another. So how we make sure the learning of children carries on, it might be the virtual learning piece carries on in, in the school with the happen chance of the predominant department having underlying medical conditions and face-to-face in other schools. So it may look different school by school, but exactly your point, it will be based on the health and wellbeing of staff and children.
And of course, there will obviously be some limiting of class size in this situation. From what the Minister said, and that's logical, if you measure the space and you look at how many with physical distancing, that will give you a number. How are we going to ensure that that too is being adhered to across schools? Which will be very difficult, I mean, don't get me wrong. So I'd imagine it will be smaller class sizes as they come back. I mean, some classes around 30 in secondary schools and certainly in primary schools. And they are literally side by side all the time. So have you thought about that? What approach have you got towards that in terms of class size?
Happy to speak Minister, if that's helpful.
Yes, that'll be helpful, Sean.
And of course, as Keith has said, we're meeting pretty much every day, seven days a week on this. And indeed met with all five unions on Wednesday, conversations with head teachers and a dedicated ministerial meeting on this exact subject this afternoon. We have sent teams out, both public health officers working full-time with us on this. Our colleague Nick Jewell, I've mentioned Keith as the lead, physically going into schools and doing assessments as we run the rule, as it were. So in one scenario, if a primary school year group came back. Some discussions obviously about year six, because they are the transition year, they're the young people who are predominantly 11, some summer born 10-year-olds who will be off to secondary school in the autumn. If we bring back the year six class of a regular one-form entry school, they may need three classrooms for that one class to be taught. So if the school space accommodates nine safely in a class, they'll be spread across three classes of nine. If it needs seven or eight, we'd use four rooms and we need teachers, the sanitation piece, the toilets, the access, the egress. All being measured out, school, looking at it school by school. So we agree the principles. We keep everybody safe and then we mediate that school by school, because as you know, we've got an excellent built estate by and large. But we've got some lovely old listed buildings that are quite compact and new build tends to be more expansive. So we apply that. And of course, the final point here, the age and stage of the children is important with very young children. Our experiences, we've kept nursery and reception classes in schools and indeed our valued partners in the preschool and early years sectors, the private voluntary sectors there. Social distancing for very young children is difficult. So you have other mediations around masks and gloves and extensive hand washing. So the age of the child is also one of the contingencies when we look at the sizes of the class.
Yeah, and so would a rotation of students between home, school and in school be part of the process? So for example, because obviously you cannot fit the entire school into school. And priority given to particular year groups of being in school and having that more direct contact, if you, obviously not direct contact, with teachers, for example.
So Chair, if you want me to jump in?
I don't mind whoever can give an answer.
So all of those options are ones that will be put before the Minister. So the notion of a sort of incremental return, which you've already referred to, is clearly something that we need to be working up as a, as one way of youngsters coming back. But also, as you've said, even if we identify the sequence, the best educational sequence for children to return. It may be that not an entire year group or an entire cohort can return simultaneously. So we, as you suggested, we will need to be looking at whether there's a rotation, as you described it. And I think one of the other factors that hasn't been referred to in terms of all the things that we need to take into account. And rotation prompts this Deputy Ward is transport as well. So the way that children, not literally going in and out of the school, but getting to and from the school. There will be important discussions that we need to have with Liberty Bus, but also with parents about how, if they are transporting children in their own private vehicles. All of those things mean that it's highly likely that there's an incremental return of children. That's what's happening almost everywhere else, isn't it? But also that even if you, let's say year six was a group that it was important to get back sooner rather than later. We may well have to do a morning, an afternoon or an alternate day set of arrangements there as well, for all the reasons that have already been explained.
I've just got one more question on this topic. Well, I will also mention, if you look at my written question, they're still paying Liberty Bus for the school buses, so that might help you a little. The, the other part of planning, and we have to consider this, is including in a return to lockdown scenario, should there be an increase in infections? So we could have students going back and we have to be prepared for that. Is that, I assume that is part of the planning process as well? The scenario of, I mean, we all hope that doesn't happen, we hope this goes smoothly, et cetera, et cetera. But if it does, are you prepared to re-establish a lockdown very quickly? With the resources that are required in place for that for home schooling? And we've learnt so much about that, haven't we?
So Chairman, I think the situation is constantly fluid. And of course, we have to reassess and change our direction should infection rates start to increase. I think that's been recognised from the health advice, not just for education, but right across the public sector and for the whole of the island. We have to keep an eye on that. I think one of the important points as well is one particular jurisdiction, if you look at them, for example, is New Zealand. I think one of the, one of the issues here would be contact tracing and making sure that you're aware of, you know, if there's a positive and who they've come into contact with and how they've come into contact with them. To determine what your next strategy is in terms of how you, how you put in place the right working schedule. We're improving in terms of devices for children, so we're on, on set, ready to sort all of those particular issues out. We've learnt a lot and the team have been extremely innovative. Education Department, teachers, school staff have been absolutely fantastic in the short timeframe they've had. To try and provide a form of education the best way they can, that's not in a physical setting. So I think there are things that we can learn from, we could possibly improve in areas and people may feel like they can improve in areas. Or we can learn off of each other should that scenario come into effect. But I think there'll be some working between the two, like you say, because there's only going to be, there may be staggered times depending on how our planning works and the health advice that comes back from that planning work will be dependent on how we stagger the times and who goes back, like Mark was saying and Sean was talking about. But there will have to be continued some form of home learning.
Yeah, we will come back on to online and later, but I pass on to Deputy Pointon for the next section of questions. I pass on to you Deputy.
Yeah, it would help if I had the right mouse in my hand. I was trying to unmute the microphone with my home computer mouse, which doesn't work. Anyway, yes, thank you. I'm really, questions on the same or similar theme, but I do have a question to follow on from this line of questioning that Rob's been involved with, and that is what's the real feel for the imminence or otherwise of a return to school? What's the advice being given? Because I personally, I've got some doubts about whether we're going to get back to school in the next couple of months even.
So if I touch, if I touch on this just as a slightly high level. I stated at the beginning, the two biggest issues that face us with regards to return to school are the physical distancing requirements and the mass gatherings piece. So if you look at the safe exit strategy that the government put out in the different levels, you'll see that level one is that consideration around the changing to physical distancing. There's still discussion around what mass gatherings may or may not look like. And some jurisdictions are suggesting that you can do it only a certain number. But this all has to go past the health advice. And so that's from a purely high level point of view, but I'm not sure whether, Mark, you want to expand on that point to give some reassurance to Deputy Pointon?
Thank you Minister. Good morning Deputy.
Good morning.
So it's a difficult question to answer because of all the variables that we've already been discussing. But perhaps the place I'll start is that the partial opening of schools following the initial and then subsequent closure notices that the Minister issued has been, as you know, for critical workers and vulnerable children. And we did some calculations at the outset of that to understand how many of those critical workers and vulnerable children we could admit into our schools or childcare settings. And although on some individual bases, we have reached the ceiling of admissions to any particular school. Overall, at the moment, the system, I believe the system is operating at about 75% of the capacity that we have. So to begin to answer your question, one of the things that we can be and are looking at with the Minister is the present capacity across our school estate for children is not yet reached. It's relatively close, and as I say, in the instances of some individual schools, we have already had to exercise the cap. Either by refusing admissions or asking children to attend other settings. So it is possible, at least under the present circumstances, for the Minister to consider whether some further children, either more critical worker children if that classification changes, or more vulnerable children if we get a little more insistent that they should be attending because it's been discretionary. We still have some capacity in the system now. And then of course, what we're looking at is that combination of health advice, you know, the hygiene, the social distancing, et cetera, et cetera. We're looking at that alongside first and foremost, of course, the compelling education need for groups over and above critical workers and vulnerable children to get back. And if the health advice comes back that we can faithfully observe all the, all the conditions that will be laid down around social distance. Good hygiene, et cetera, then of course, we will start to trickle, I think, some more children back into school. If the Minister is satisfied that all of those conditions are adequately met. We signalled, I think, or the Minister signalled in her press statements in relation to the latest period of closure. That we would be using this time through to the next, through to the first of June, effectively after half term. To, to understand whether we might start to open the door ever so slightly from, I'm not saying on, I'm very clearly saying from the second half of the summer term. But as, but just to go back and be really clear, we don't have any kind of target number or target date at this stage. But what we do know is that we're not operating at full capacity at the moment. So yeah, so I hope that's as helpful as I can be without having got to the point where the Minister's had clear advice, underpinned by health advice as to what she could do next.
Well, that's reassuring, Mark, thank you. Let's move to the students. Students will have been at home for a long time. Students will have been at home for a long time and learning from home for a long time. Some of those students might well find it quite difficult going back to school. What support structures will you have in place for those who are struggling returning?
Shaun, would you like to make a start on this one? And then I'm sure Keith Andor, I will happily add anything else in if we need to.
Very happy to. Good morning, Deputy Pointon.
Morning, Shaun.
We are looking after that piece, excuse me, already. So whatever day or date in the phase return for a young person or child in their year group to come back partially or fully, it's not day one. We're doing checks constantly. Schools are doing welfare checks with the children through the onlining piece and directly our psychology and wellbeing services kept in contact with over 350 families at least weekly. Some children getting calls daily or even twice daily alongside social care colleagues also within Sipes. The Minister gave, in the principles she laid out, a very clear steer to us that we will be instituting wellbeing checks on children as they return. So just as, for example, when an adult has a period of time away from work, you have a return to work interview to see how you are and to help you adjust back into the workplace. We're looking to do that with our well-developed set of emotional literacy support assistance with counsellors in schools, with known and trusted teachers, to do a how are you and getting ready. Our inclusion team have been doing some work based on research from Oxford-Brooks University on what might be called, their term, we might adapt it, a recovery curriculum about acknowledging for children coming back that they might have had a tough time. So some of the trauma-informed work for those who are at the sharp end have had a difficult time in the lockdown. But for all children, getting back to school routine, getting to know school structures, reinstating friendships, all children, but especially perhaps if you're the only child in a family, a so-called only child, you have not been playing with somebody for seven or eight weeks because of social distancing and the lockdown. So the re-establishment of friendships. So a great deal of the early work will be giving space to reconnect, re-learn the structure and routine. We've just concluded a survey, we ourselves alongside the Office of the Children's Commissioner, and we had 2,150, I think, children, young people give us feedbacks. We've got a vast amount of evidence with some really granular responses that show some children have been worried. An awful lot of children are very keen to get back to school and a lot of it is around the social contact with their friends and with their teachers. So at the forefront of our thinking will be that welfare piece.
Shaun, thank you very much for that answer. And that's very fulsome and I'm sure will be source of reassurance for parents especially. I'm going to hand you back now to Rob. You're on mute, Rob.
Sorry, I was good at this. Just a question regards to critical workers, children and so on. I believe the advice changed from the beginning where it was one essential critical worker and then it has to be both parents. And that has left some essential workers having to adapt. Given that we've got capacity, is there flexibility in the system? So that if somebody is a essential worker and the other parent can now return to work, we may be able to facilitate that on a case-by-case basis. And I do recognise how difficult this is and that underlines everything we're saying today. We're not trying to catch anybody out, genuinely, just to try and get as best we can for people. So is that flexibility built into the system?
So I'll pick this up, Chair, if that's okay. Jonathan Williams, I think, has just had technical problems and disappeared.
That's okay.
So the answer is that at the moment, we want to stay with the criteria that we've presently been using because actually not all of the children that we would want to come to school are attending anyway. So I think our first thoughts are actually in relation to, there's a strict definition for critical worker and who's eligible for school or childcare. But we always remember that alongside that is this other group of vulnerable children as well. And we have been concerned throughout to make sure that the original eligible groups are the ones that are given most opportunity to take advantage of either a childcare or a school setting. So we have been quite firm in the line that we've taken around who is eligible. There is, there is the ability to appeal exceptionality and we have had a number of cases that have been considered where other factors have come into play that have required us to be flexible beyond the strict criteria, but we've kept that to an absolute minimum. And then as we look forwards, there will be a review of critical worker eligibility because there should be anyway, but also there will be some pressure from the business sector as it starts to open up a bit more for a review to be undertaken. But, and I emphasise the but, we are looking at this as the Education Minister has rightly pointed out, through an educational lens, not a business lens. And actually, what we want to plan for is those next groups of children who should return to school if it is at all possible because actually the educational case for them coming back is overwhelming. So my view would be, yes, we will continue to review the criteria for critical workers. But actually, the Minister's given us a steer that whoever comes back next after critical workers and vulnerable children should come back on the basis of the education argument, not the critical worker argument. If the two coincide, that's fine. But actually, for us, it's about identifying which children really most need to come back to school if that's possible.
Yeah, I can see the pressures increasing as more, less, I don't know how to put it, but the lockdown is loosened, so to speak, and more businesses go back who may have one worker who's an essential worker, but now the other partner can go back. So it is going to be a challenge, I recognise that. The fact there is appeal process, I think, is interesting. So that will help in some ways. Deputy Pointon, I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to ask from your section of questions?
I haven't.
Okay, okay. I'll just quickly move on then and we'll do these quickly about some areas of monitoring and progress. If schools do remain closed for the remainder of 2020 academic year, monitoring progress, which I know is very important to schools, how will that happen? Particularly for those who perhaps were moving up a key stage, either into secondary school or from key stage three to key stage four, or from key stage four into key stage five. Do you have, and I recognise how difficult that is, but do you have a mechanism that you think you'll be using for that?
Okay, so there is a great deal going on in this area because of course the concern, there is concerns, for example, who students that may have fallen behind because they don't feel they can have some form of structure, they don't feel, you know, everyone's going to be coping with what we're experiencing with this lockdown very differently. Students are no different. But in terms of how we manage this, there's, you know, schools have always performed a gap analysis and worked to ensure pupils are provided with support for the areas they may be weaker in. So we have a way of dealing with that and particularly communication is key in that area. Monitoring of students at the moment in terms of during their homeschooling, you know, the teams are standard assessment teams are auditing, monitoring, supporting schools and they're documenting the progress of this. In terms of support for students to achieve attainment levels required for subsequent stages in their education, so the transitioning pieces, teachers assess and address gaps in attainment every year. This will no doubt be a focus when pupils return with the aim of ensuring pupils are ready for the next stage in their education through gap analysis and targeted interventions. I think it will be very much based on a case-by-case basis because each individual is going to be very different. I don't know whether Shaun or Mark would like to add anything further to that.
Well, can I just add to that and perhaps Shaun may want to answer? This is, you know, the model in schools of children all progressing via a certain amount, a given rate and following flight paths and so on. Is that process still going to be used, given this disruption to education and, for example, the cancelling of exams? So, you know, are we going to be more flexible with teachers? Because I can see the enormous amount of pressure on teachers given that underlying theoretical model, which some might say takes away the individuality of the student.
Shaun, do you want to kind of pick up at this point for the Minister?
Happy to, Chair. Obviously, this is in two parts. There's the areas that Jersey's in charge of and the areas where not. So the methodology for the qualifications with the cancellation of public examinations, GCCs, A-levels, other level two and three qualifications, that is out with us. Obviously, our teachers of year 11 and year 13 predominantly and the lecturers at Highlands College are following the examination board's rubric of how you assess, how you build on mock examinations, teacher assessment, coursework to end up to the final grade. In terms of Jersey's own assessment framework that we have for both primary and secondary, that itself is predicated where teacher assessment leads the line in contrast to other jurisdictions. But you're right, we have used curriculum tests and subject-specific tests predominantly for year six and year nine students to mediate the teacher assessment to allow us to give consistency and reassurance across all schools. And those have not been put in place. So we are working with the subject specialists in our schools, heads of department, subject leads in primary, under our advisory team, to capture this. And I think the first thinking, because we don't know when we will be out of lockdown, is we're going back to basics, which is the work children produce in, workbooks are online, the coursework, as it were, at all ages, to do our transition piece from year six to year seven teachers where we actually sit down and look what the young person individually has achieved as the benchmark, as it were, on which we build progress. We know there will be a setback. There's emerging evidence from the Economic Endowment Foundation and others that some subjects have been hit harder than others by lockdown in the English-speaking world. Only early evidence of that. So we have to be informed by the evidence. And you're quite right, we will have new transition arrangements because the old ones aren't in place for the summer of 2020.
Yeah, okay, I'm just, okay, that's great. The final question for me before we move on to Deputy Higgins was just about, teachers are going to be asked to provide grades to examples. We know that and that's going to happen. It's in terms of the workload to do that for teachers, just to recognise that they are working hard on that. And what will support will be given if grades are questioned by parents? Both for parents and for schools because it could create some conflict perhaps in that area? Whoever thinks they can answer that best?
Yeah, Shaun, if you could take this probably best.
Certainly, and the point is well observed that the teachers of year 11 and 13 who might be doing the last of revision classes in school or managing the young people on study leave with daily tutorials and webinars and that sort of thing that would be normally happening, have diverted. The year 11 and 13 students were told by the announcement of the United Kingdom's Prime Minister of the cancellation of public exams. But those teachers are working very hard in new terrain of working to the Joint Qualification Authority's rulebook and the exam boards. It's different again for the International Baccalaureate and for Cambridge International, the organisation that runs the IGCCs and indeed in other places, IA-levels. They're following the rubric. So it is already published, although they are updating the qualifications authority in the UK. There is an appeal process for young people or their parents who don't like the final grade given. And that will be a due process under each exam board. And there is the opportunity in the autumn to retake an examination. And then it is my understanding, and the advice is evolving, is that the young person will be able to choose the better of the two grades that they were rewarded in the summer process with results day having been confirmed as August 13th for A-levels and August 20th for GCSEs. If they do better in a formal exam in the autumn, they can take that better grade. If not, they revert to the one originally given. And that is going to be a national picture for those exams.
It'd be an interesting, see what the uptake of that is actually, won't it?
It's a whole new terrain.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll just hand on then to Deputy Higgins, who's got some questions about online learning. Deputy Higgins, are you there?
Yes, I am, Chair. Yes, I'm very interested in what the department and the schools are doing in terms of the online tuition. And to fully understand what's being offered, how it's being delivered and how it's being monitored and regulated. So could I ask the Minister just to outline what is being offered by the schools at the present time to the children who are working at home?
Okay, so I will try and do it as quickly and clearly as I can, if that's okay, Deputy. But basically, the platform or model that our education system is using, so there are various platforms. We have Google Classrooms, we've got Seesaw for primary, we have OneNote, we have Doodle and something called Pixel. There's also the Teams offering that is continuing to be rolled out as well. And we're currently, now we have a needs analysis in terms of the gaps for devices. We are identifying purchasing those. But the expected standards for online education. So there are safety guidelines that all schools have to conform to, such as not sharing the background from where you are teaching or not being able to see into a child's bedroom or living room. So there are no set-out standards for online learning. All schools are following Jersey curriculum, but learning is having to be adapted. So example, a year nine design and tech lesson cannot be taught at home because the children do not have access to the actual industrial tools. Nevertheless, schools are trying to give children a wide range of experiences. Almost all schools, for example, are setting learning that lasts about three hours with the child doing full-art work as part of the school. In effect, the child is doing about four to five hours solid work per day. All children are receiving the teaching of the core subjects. So core subjects being maths, English and science, with other subjects being managed in different ways across the week. So the core is certainly minimum standards based on the Jersey curriculum, but taught in a unique way. Students who don't have access to home devices are being given physical copies of sheets, books, et cetera, on a weekly basis. There are some that actually prefer that method in terms of hard copy. Parents are collecting these packs from the school. Some parents have requested both. That is, they have access to a device but also like the physical resources. And schools have no problems with this. And this has been going on right through the periods. And we've had the Easter holidays in between, of course, as well. And so that's in a roundabout way, an answer to your question. But I'm happy for any further follow-ups to that.
No, no, thank you for the overview. You've mentioned the different platforms that are being offered, or being used, I should say, by the schools. Has this caused any particular technical difficulties? And are all the children getting the same sort of standard of provision? So in other words, if you're not using one model and you've got different models, how is the standard of delivery taking place? How good is it?
Okay, so I think the best way I can answer this, and I'll maybe pass it further on to Shaun so he can give you more further insight in terms of different schools. But there is this piece around autonomy and teachers and head teachers knowing what is appropriate and correct for the children. Some children are much more vulnerable. There may be extra needs needing to be met. So some form of complete standardisation, as we always know, right across the education piece. We have guidelines, we have requirements for curriculum, we have those types of standardisation. But the autonomy piece, the piece where you're allowing a teacher to teach in a way for their children that's best for the children they know, is absolutely... for their children that's best for the children they know, is absolutely appropriate. But I think Shaun can probably give a little bit of further insight in terms of how standardisation or non-standardisation in terms of education, whether online or in physical buildings, is being met.
Certainly, Minister. Happy to pick up on that thread of Deputy Higgins' question. Obviously, going back to March 18th, when the minister announced the imminent closure of schools physically and the move to home learning, as in teachers teaching remotely, children learning virtually at home. That was a huge shift because the normal method of teaching and learning is to gather in a classroom, classes of children, subject tutor groups with a teacher. That was done at pace and was based on the resources available to schools. We've continued in the shutdown to develop prowess. Lots of our teachers have been trained in Google Classrooms in the primary because the general landscape suggested secondary schools were well-enabled to fully digital online learning and primary schools, the more mixed economy of hard copy as well as some online learning offer. The senior advisers in the Standards and Achievement Team of the education part of Sipes are undertaking, as we speak, a review and have kept monitoring throughout the quality of the offer. So, they've physically been in schools last week and this, meeting head teachers or virtually reviewing the quality of the offer and advising. And as you would expect us to do, sharing best practice. Those schools with particular champions of online learning are teaching other teachers how best to utilise, whether it's Google Classrooms, Microsoft Teams or indeed Seesaw, which is the main platform being used very, very effectively, as I'm getting feedback more and more in primary schools. This is a learning process and we will get better the longer we're in lockdown, teaching in this new way.
And how is it you're actually monitoring how these delivery platforms are achieving in the schools? So, in other words, are you listening in on some of the classes and seeing what's going on? Seeing the delivery or are you just taking what you've been told from the schools?
We've got various means. On the safeguarding side, our safeguarding governance lead are keeping appraised. On the technical side, the education IT team, part of modernisation and digital, are checking. And we're also getting feedback from parents and children. As I mentioned earlier in this scrutiny hearing, we've just had the evidence from over 2,000 children and their parents in the survey of learners. And there's a great deal of information, feedback about the quality and some gaps. So, we've had praise for certain schools and the same school getting some challenge from parents in different year groups. So, this is work in progress where we're doing the challenge piece, which of course our senior advisers are skilled at doing because that's the meat and drink of their work, to not just accept what we're told, but to gather evidence and cross-refer. But we are very much in support function because this is a challenging period. But we do want the best quality learning offers so children don't fall behind, especially those who might be deemed vulnerable.
And can you tell me, in terms of the number of children who are using computers at home, how many are not? How many are you providing the physical packs to?
From the outset, most schools did surveys of parents about the methodology. As the minister has said, some families prefer and children paper and hard copy, others it may be the only thing available. Schools from the outset were loaning devices. We have backed that up as a department, rather than school by school, with ongoing surveys of need. So, we have currently identified and are resourcing around nine schools who said they did not have sufficient resource, as in laptops, iPads, other devices to loan to children. And we are procuring devices to ensure that the longer this goes on, that those young people will have a device at home to access the online learning offer. That's been done school by school and obviously with the usual governance about families agreeing that the loan and to do their best to keep the device safe and return it. But the key thing is to get more devices to children. As I say, that was predominantly done at the outset through loan systems of schools and we're backing that up where there are gaps in that resource.
Okay, can you just try and be a bit more specific in terms of numbers? I'd like to get a measure of how many children do not have access to electronic devices? Because it strikes me that the ones who are online and dealing with teachers are getting a better service than the ones who aren't, who are just getting paper copies once a week.
You're not going to stand out in your class. We don't have a scenario, for example, in a primary school where 25 children are online and three of them aren't and they're getting a different offer. We've got, we do have a consistency piece and there is a challenge that's even deeper than putting a device in children's hands, which is the accessibility. The telecoms companies were very helpful in giving free broadband vouchers, again distributed through schools. The quantum you ask about, I'd have to revert with the precise figures because this is dynamic. But we have around 16,000 learners across our schools and college estate. And it's our understanding we're talking about in the small number of hundreds. But that is a school-by-school piece and as I say, loan devices. We've also got some very helpful third sector people. Schools regularly have PTAs and charities working with them to buy additional resources, whether it's laptops or minibuses and the like. And we've got a useful partnership with some entrepreneurial figures who've gone on the front foot to help resource that. So, we're joining this up to make sure the devices are safe to use, have the appropriate apps on them for learning. But the quantum is very small compared to the whole school population.
And in terms of the computers that are being used, what have you done to provide security for them? So, to make sure that people aren't either hacking into them or they're looking at inappropriate material?
So, to be clear, as I say, we have the detailed information on this school-by-school. What schools have done is wiped their devices. So, for example, one of our larger primary schools has significant resource of iPads. They wiped them, they restored on them the learning apps for predominantly mathematics and English and for the younger children, the early years applications, educational applications. They had a very simple, straightforward, effective homeschool agreement where the child and the parents agreed to use them for the purposes of and do their best to look after them and return them at the end of the loan period. And our head of governance, who oversees the safeguarding piece for devices, has made sure that all schools understand the protocols to keep children safe when using these devices.
Okay, now, just going back to what you mentioned about landlines. We know that JT offered them. How many of the families you're dealing with actually have landlines? Because many people these days are just keeping a mobile phone as opposed to having a fixed landline. So, how are they getting the full provision?
I must defer to other colleagues with technical knowledge, Deputy Higgins. On an earlier conversation, we talked about welfare checks. So, whether it's a landline or a mobile, obviously, we can make contact with families and children to make sure they're safe. In terms of learning, as I think I referenced, even if one puts a device and has a great online learning offer, for some homes without the infrastructure, it clearly shows the challenge and it's not feasible to have a completely uniform offer to every Jersey home in which children are seeking to learn from home.
Okay, and can I just move on to the actual assessment and testing? How are you actually doing that with the material that's being given out to the students?
As has been noted earlier in the curriculum, we're not testing children using this remote learning as of yet. In some of our schools, the year 12 examinations that were already scheduled, I believe, for next week, are progressing. So, that is being done remotely. Teachers have been doing lessons through the various platforms the minister shared throughout. So, in some cases, parents are being asked to assure that the young person is going to work alone without their textbooks while they undertake internal examinations. That's unusual, that hasn't yet happened. But I understand in at least one school, that is pertaining for year 12 students to keep them on track, who'll be moving into their final year of sixth form. Assessment is going on throughout. Teachers who work remotely and I'm sure the scrutiny panel members will be aware, there's a real challenge for a school to ensure online learning for all and the physical presence of teachers to the vulnerable children, children of critical workers on site. But we are making sure that all children, whether it's online or in hard copy, are getting feedback on their work, the work is effectively more than marked. Points of strength, points of development given so that children can continue to learn. So, broadly, assessment ongoing all the time, testing not at this point.
Okay, well, that answered all my questions and I'll revert back to the Chair. Thank you.
Roland, Roland, I think you're next.
Yeah, thanks. This is a section on the national examinations. What support is being offered to students who perhaps didn't do as well as they'd have liked in their mock exams, that are concerned about the grading process? Obviously, subsequent university placements.
I believe Shaun slightly touched on this earlier with, in terms of the grading process. I think there's going to be, well, I know that there is because I've received emails and contacts from people. And I believe I've spoken to you about this before, Roland, this concern about moving on or even into work by younger students. Everybody's in the same boat at this process at this time. But Shaun did cover the point, the ability to take that exam in the autumn. But in terms of accessing to university, I know of some who are concerned around the student financing model, as an example, who are thinking and actually are worried about what's happening in terms of the UK for going to university for this September and are considering going to university next September. I'm not sure whether Shaun wants to or Mark can expand on that to give you a little bit more detail.
Happy to do so, I'll defer to Mark first.
You go first, Shaun.
Thank you. Deputy Hughlin, this is one of the most frequently asked questions. And it's because students, whether GCC or A-level, tend to do far worse in their mocks than in the summer. Why is that? Well, maybe they're not prepared, maybe they're not taking it seriously. But actually, one of the trade secrets is that teachers set mocks a bit harder than the real thing to sharpen minds and to say, come on, you did really well. And often, teachers in the feedback process to students say, well, it won't be any harder than that. Let's crack on, sorry. Deputy Ward is smiling because he, as a renowned head of science of one of our bigger schools until recently, may well have done the same. The examination boards know this. They know that the mock results will very often go up because we get a national profile. There's around 675,000 young people each chronological year group taking the British-based exams, including students in the Channel Islands. So, they will look at the profile of all of the results. In some subjects, not so many anymore since the previous Secretary of State in the UK moved us more fully to terminal exams. But you will know in certain subjects like art, PE, sport, science, design, technology, textiles, there's a great deal of coursework and that coursework will be captured, albeit from home learning, as well to get the final grade. Schools are very skilled at doing internal assessments as well as mock examinations and they will garner all of that material together to advocate on behalf of our Jersey children and young people doing, sorry, young people doing their examinations. And as I mentioned before, as the minister's referenced, there is an appeal process and the option of an autumn examination to get a backup or indeed improved grade on that which is offered this August.
You've covered nearly all my next questions, so thank you, Shaun, for making that. However, how has this been communicated to students and parents alike?
The communication is through the school. We are working with school leaders, just as we mentioned in the main, or sorry, the first block of questions about the safe exit, safe return of schools. Ordinarily, post the May half-term, year 11 and year 13 students wouldn't be back. They would be in study leave, doing the terminal exams and then having the longer summer holiday after all of that hard work and other things like, you know, proms. And the minister mentioned at the beginning about mass gatherings and the concern. We are working with schools on the phasing return. We don't want to lose sight of the fact that year 11 and year 13 are very important going on to transition. Some will be going into a new sixth form. Those going off to university may well need some of that wellbeing care transition work. So, we're going to work with schools about late summer, how we gather those groups together and give them advice. But the core piece, advice is through each school.
You mentioned vocational courses, but what guidance is being received from the exam boards to support teachers and lecturers in the assessment of these courses?
My colleague Sabu would be best placed, I think, to answer the piece on lecturers and the vocational courses.
Hello, we are completely in contact with what the advice is from various awarding bodies and we are following the rulings that is related to the courses that we are running in at Highlands College. It seems that...
Sorry, I don't know where your microphone is, but you're getting a sort of a bit of a Darth Vader sort of voice coming through. So, can I ask you to repeat that?
Yes, it might be due to my wifi, I take the video off, that might help.
Okay, let's have a go.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
I think that is better, yes, thank you.
Okay, so Highlands College, as you are aware, is running a variety of awarding bodies courses. We have been in contact with Education Department in the UK as well as the awarding bodies that we directly provide courses at Highlands College. And we are following the advice that they are given. We are also receiving updates from Association of Colleges in the UK that would enable us to make the assessments that we need to be in line with the awarding bodies' guidelines. For our apprenticeship programme, what we are looking to achieve is to make sure that those who have been unable to attend work due to COVID-19 restrictions are brought back to the college with the view that they would do their endpoint assessment and therefore are able to achieve their qualifications. We are also working with various businesses to involve them and include them as part of the assessment because some of the practical work that they were supposed to compete might not have been completed and we're working with employers and that regard. That is in hand as part of the return to the college programme. We are looking at making sure, similar to what other colleagues explained in terms of guidelines of what we are working on, safety of our learners and our staff, as well as ensuring that those who are unable to access learning the way that is available to other colleagues, other students are available to access learning. So, overall, we are following the links and connections that we have with UK and we are not considering any area to be addressed.
This is more of a general question. Do you, what concern do you have or what measures are you putting in place? Because clearly, some students could slip an academic year or delay the delay going to university or the delay starting work, whatever it is. Are we concerned about that and what measures being put in place to support them? If that is likely to be the case.
What we have got in place is over the summer and also in terms of admission for the next academic year, we are looking for those who are entering the further education or moving within further education from one year to another. For us to have, making sure that we have a setup of admission and training for them that would be over and above the normal inductions that they would receive in order for us to get, make sure that they are ready to go back to full training and full learning. That piece of work, similar to what you explained, is available to children that are transitioning from one stage to another. And in terms of those students who would be considering going to university, we are putting together a more comprehensive study skills programme to bring them back to, for the period that they have not been studying, for them to be able to access and get on to the universities that they are interested in doing. There isn't any specific concerns at this moment in time. We have updated the Skills Jersey sites on online access to career advice and guidance. There will be further information of that publicised over the next few days. And we hope that people are available and able to access the facilities that are available, both online as well as these specific programmes that we have put together to enable those people who are attending further and higher education to access the... those people who are attending further and higher education to access the training and support that they need.
I'm sorry to push on this, I didn't hear it. There could be a delay in certain students either moving on with their academic careers at university or their work careers outside of university. Because they might not have got the necessary qualifications through the mock exams that have been assessed by the mock exams. That's my, that is my concern for those particular students. How are we supporting them? Or is this an irrelevance? Then, you know, are we talking very small numbers here?
I believe that there will be small numbers, but we have in our planning put together a repeat of some of the exams that students might feel that they have not achieved the grades that they were expecting. We are looking at the guidance that comes from various awarding bodies to that regard, to make sure that that is acceptable. If we were to repeat any of the exams. Overall, in terms of the reports that we have received from Highlands. Those who are accessing online learning seems to be flourishing and there hasn't been any areas that we have any concerns about. As I said, the main area of concerns is having the time for those who need to do some practical exams to be able to conclude that and in order to gain their qualifications.
We've had a bit of a while. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm aware of time and I know the minister has to go to another meeting. Can I ask for a quick summary of what's happening with the project team in relation to school fees during the ongoing crisis?
If I can possibly pass this on to Jonathan, he'll be able to give a very quick synopsis oversight. Because he's currently managing this project for me at the moment, very kindly. It's been a long haul. It's been a tricky particular one. I think that the principles that we laid out for this one was, you know, fee paying schools, particularly in regards to fee paying schools. There was still a provision of education, albeit reprovided in a different way. But if Jonathan can just expand on the way that we took this forward and what's happening at this moment in time.
Thank you, Minister. So the first thing to reflect is that, as described before, this is broad and complex. There are a number of sectors we have to consider. Each sector needs a different treatment and within each sector, there are various different subsegments that need different treatment as well. So I'll just talk through the main sectors and what we've been doing so far. In the context of schools, as the minister has described, she's clearly laid out the stance that says that for those parents who continue to pay fees. They should continue to do so, please. That is, as we've described, predicated largely on the continued provision of education, albeit online. And we've heard several examples of where teachers are also providing a support for those students who have formal qualifications in the context of some of their work around assessments. There is a concern, of course, of parents whose income has been directly impacted by COVID. And consequently, the minister has asked us to work up. And we are at advanced stages of what we're describing, a hardship approach, which looks to provide some financial supports to schools. Specifically to provide support to those parents affected by COVID in the context of their income to help them get through the next term's fees. So in terms of the state of progress there, that is an advanced business case with the Treasury at the moment. And we're just working through the final governance aspects to determine an evidence that we continue to spend public finance wisely. I'll pause there before I move on to the nursery sector in case there are any questions.
No, that's, I mean, there are many, many questions, obviously, but we will have to wait. Do you have a timescale for when that will be available?
I'm hoping to get that submitted and agreed. It'll probably be submitted by close today. So the agreement deadline would then be next week. We then move to implementation. But a number of schools have already been very helpful by providing, for example, their pre-existing mechanism for determining eligibility for hardship. And that gives us some comfort that we can implement the scheme relatively quickly thereafter. We know head teachers were asking for it. So the pressure is on us as ever, but it is progressing well. To provide some quick-
Yeah, Sean, carry on.
Moving on then to the nursery sector. The first thing I'd say is we're very grateful to the representative body JEA, who have been working with us with close contacts. We have weekly meetings. And in the last meeting, they were good enough to canvass their members for opinions on how the co-funding payroll scheme is supporting nurseries. We were pleased to hear that in the majority of cases, that's working well in the context of this first month of payment. And that's April salaries. It is likely to get more difficult in May. And the body were able to tell us that June might well cause some more issues in that there are potentially insufficient reserves to make that payment to staff before receipt of funds from government. So that's the main issue to deal with immediately. And our approach is to work with the Treasury team, the authors of that business scheme. And indeed, some of the banks who are stepping in with government underwritten lending facilities to see if we can get some cash flow support back into the nurseries come June time. So plenty of time to sort it. We're very aware of the issues. The other issue, interestingly, that we have our eyes on for that sector is the risk that's presented by the end of the co-funding payroll scheme, if that ends after three months as a scenario. Combined with a continuation of reduced student numbers and therefore reduction in fees and an increase in staff costs. So that, if you like, creates, and I'll quote one of the members of JEA, the perfect storm. That means that they could be facing a greater risk at that stage come June, July time than now. So again, by virtue of that close collaboration, we are eyes open to that risk. And we're now going to work through the number of different of governments and external parties, how to mitigate it. It's very connected to the safe and the phased return to childcare we've been talking to. So that is something we'll work on closely. If I then move on to some of the student financing, and we've heard a few aspects of that. The first thing to say, interestingly, as with many, many government services, we have to be able to deal with a full range of opinion and emotion decision making. So in the context of students, for example, and what might happen in a 2021 academic year for new students. We had a number who were saying to us, we think that the employment market is looking a bit tricky. Therefore, we're more likely to start university studies. But equally, at the polar extreme, we have those who are saying, we are a bit uncertain as to how the institutions will provide learning. So we would like to defer for a year. And of course, every point between those two extremes. The point of saying that is that as ever, we have to try and deal with different scenarios and how we plan things. The main aspects in the context of COVID impact on these groups is around, as we've said before, some of the logistical planning about getting access to flats and apartments and therefore getting hold of belongings. That's very much dealt with in large part by opening up the air bridge for students, which we're in the process of resolving now. Also recognising that some students might have some incremental costs as a consequence of, in particular, final year students on grants having to go back beyond the term of their normal final year to undertake exams or placements or final aspects of their degree. So we have to build therefore the financial means by which we respond to those. In terms of the stage of work, we are now at a stage when all officers have concluded what recommendations we'd like to make to the minister. It's likely that we'll be making those recommendations in writing at some point close today, which gives the minister another exciting weekend of hard work to continue to review and appraise those options. But it means that we should be in a position to make some decisions by middle of next week for the full range as it relates to that student finance funding. And the final point, before I then pause for breath and respond to some supplementary questions, is that we're also aware through work with Jersey Childcare Trust of some of the good work they've been doing as it relates to provision of services into the earlier sector now. I'm pleased to say supportive through the co-funded payroll scheme, which removes some of the immediate concerns they had. And also they've been very supportive of the work with nannies, getting back into working with households. And whilst that is not yet resolved, because of course it relates very much to the health advice around entering the household for non-essential work. That we separated that group from the broader safe exit plan to try and speed up and expedite the solution for that group. So again, a good progress may so far not yet resolve. But again, looking to try and work with the health advisers to get clear guidance out to that group by end of next week.
Okay, that's a very comprehensive answer. We've only got a few minutes left, so I'm going to move on. I wanted to ask about teacher wellbeing as well in this scenario, because we have a very different scenario for teachers to do their job on. And how is the wellbeing of staff being monitored during this situation? Because as I think we know, having your office in your own home, that means you do seem to constantly be on the on the computer and dealing with stuff as well. So how is the wellbeing of teachers being monitored during this time?
Yes, Chairman, I completely get and understand what you're talking about when it comes to the working from home piece. It can be very difficult to separate that work, home, life balance when there is a great deal going on at the moment. And, you know, you want to do the best for, particularly in a teacher's world, is do the best for the children that are responsible of educating. And so we can recognise those difficulties that some may be thriving through this, some may not be so. So they receive weekly updates on staff wellbeing and how to access support. There is a number of help lines, wellbeing, support pack, advice and tips. And so working from home, you know, they're getting advice and tips about managing distractions, managing the workstation and safety when they're working from home. And the HR business partner hasn't been contacted, as far as we're aware, by any teaching staff with any concerns regarding wellbeing at this present time. I don't know whether Sean can expand on that for you or whether you'd like him to expand on that.
Well, I think it was just things along, well, there's two things before Sean replies. I just want, again, I think we've had this assurance, but this again, that teacher performance improvement plans, which put a lot of pressure on teachers have been suspended during this process because you simply cannot perform as you normally would. And second, it's just the question of making teachers make that division, as was mentioned by the minister. I know what they like. They do tend to commit, over commit at times and then put themselves in a vulnerable position. I don't know if you have a comment on that, Sean?
Well, I'd agree with you, Chairman, about the commitment. And we've seen it, haven't we? The incredible work effort in maintaining home learning, in going into schools, indeed, turning up in Easter holidays in a voluntary capacity. And many schools head teacher reporting huge numbers volunteering to do the May half term for critical workers' children. So as the minister said, the wellbeing of staff is to the fore, your technical point. In a much earlier scrutiny hearing, I said, I believe to be the case, we later confirmed to you that those personal improvement plans were all paused throughout this period and put to one side. Head teachers are responsible and indeed through our acts of referral line, we've got a 24/7 confidential line that people concerned about their own wellbeing. But this is a dynamic two-way street. Not everyone puts their hand up to say, I'm struggling. They need an arm around the shoulder figuratively, with social distancing, obviously, from their head teachers or their direct line managers. And privately and confidentially, there's a great deal of activity through the HR business partners of supporting individuals who are struggling with this because the duty of care for our staff is discharged through the heads and down through then their leadership teams. And I know of many examples, obviously not for public airing, where a great deal was being done in that area. But the commitment of professionals to push, push, push to do their best by children is evident to all of us, I know.
Yeah, and okay, that's, we're very aware of that. We've got a few minutes left. I think the questions from Deputy Higgins on support for vulnerable children, their families has been covered. Deputy Higgins, are you happy with that? Or do you want to add anything?
No, I'm happy with that at the moment. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to some questions at the end in terms of future aspects. I just, I wanted to ask about the independent school funding review that was happening and the outcomes of that so far. And how they might be affected by the COVID-19 situation. Because obviously you've had a lot of information come through from that review. Do you have any thoughts on that at the moment?
I have lots of thoughts on that at the moment. So we haven't received the final report. We have seen draft reports with regards to the school funding review. Of course, when COVID came along, a lot of the work that we were doing has been put on the back burner. So we have only in the last week, two weeks started discussing how we get some of these things back on track, if we do, how we do that. And there is, of course, the bigger lead coming from the councillor ministers about how the government plan is going to be working this year, if at all. What recovery may look like, whether there's a recession after this, how we work through that, what our budgets and forecasting are looking like. So and that started conversations around finances and structural and cyclical deficits and all the issues around those. They've started in councillor ministers and of course, as an education team, we have been discussing about how we bring some of these particular programmes back online if we can.
And so do you, are we saying that the recovery phrase, the discussions that have started and you've been included as with all ministers? Or do you feel that there needs to be wider consultation with you on that?
So I think you asked a question in the States about groups and think tanks and bits and pieces like that, Chairman. But there has been a separate group set up of ministers, which includes the Chief Minister, the Treasury Minister, the External Relations Minister and the Economic Development Minister and myself around the recovery piece. So I've been asked specifically to go into that meeting. In actual fact, that's my next meeting today. So we're regularly meeting about how, because we don't know what things are going to look like after COVID-19. That there's so many variables and unknowns about how we return to some form of normal. And if there is a recession, how much that will affect state's finances. But of course, with all the finances that are being used during COVID as well and the implications of social distancing and stay at home and all those various requirements that we have around the health aspects. The inclusion of some of the issues that I have and I've raised many times is around our efficiencies programme, which I had issues with previously, but actually it's exacerbated it even more. Some of those efficiencies, we're talking about increasing charges. Now, if you're talking about a recovery, you don't start charging businesses to upskill workforce. Because that doesn't help that recovery. It doesn't help them. So these are the kinds of conversations we are having.
And just to finish off, things will be different after this. And is this not a prime opportunity for any reform of education system to move it forward as best possible to take that opportunity? And that is a time for reform because things are going to have to change anyway in many ways.
Yeah, I think, I think there's always an opportunity to learn from these types of experiences and take on board some of the, a lot of the opportunities. There's always positives to every negative. There are, there are things that we could potentially do. But as you know, Chairman, and I know, and having worked in the States for a long period of time. It's the types of changes that we'd need to see. We've had the consultation in terms of the big education conversation. There may be a piece around us, maybe going out back out to the public after this or during this and saying, right, we heard you the first time on the big education conversation. You know, your experience with what you've seen in terms of education during this period. You know, how would you like to see education going forward from that piece? So we're asking those questions. We're having those conversations at the moment about how we could do that. And the thing is with doing this type of work as well, is that you have to have the capacity of your officers to do so. And literally, everybody has been 100% focused on how we plan, deal and manage and finance COVID related issues at this precise time.
Okay, I'm conscious that we have come to the end of our time and that people have other meetings. If there are any questions we don't have, we'll put them in writing to you that we haven't covered. Is there anything else the panel wants to raise at all? If there's anything, just quickly speak up, I would suggest.
No, I'm happy. Thank you.
I recognise we've missed out one question in particular, but we will put that in writing, I think.
The minister alluded to it, so I'm fine for the time being.
And is there anything from the minister or officers they want to ask quickly before we end the meeting?
Chairman, just to say that I posted a supplementary answer for Deputy Higgins around the land-
around the landline issue, and no landline is required, you just need a mobile device that a mobile router can connect to.
Okay, yeah, I saw that, that's very helpful. I assume that's part of the provision, thanks. Okay, in that case, and I will say thank you to everyone for their time, and thank you to all those working in education in schools for the commitment they've made to continue in education in a very difficult circumstance, and I'll call the meeting to an end. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, goodbye.
Thank you.